All right, good evening and welcome to our regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Chaplain James Michael Mayfield with the Clayton County Police Department. It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance that will be led by our veteran of the month, Clarence Burno. If you will, please stand with me.
Let's bow our heads, please. Our heavenly Father, we gather in your name tonight thanking you for the opportunity to be together. We know these citizens have come here tonight to handle business. And we pray, Father, that you might be glorified through everything said and done. Your will would be done and that Jesus Christ, your son, would be magnified. We ask in his name, amen.
Amen.
Of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening. Welcome to the September 3rd Board of Commissioners Clayton County Meeting. Our first order of business would be the adoption of the agenda. Does any members have any amendments?
All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next order of business first would be our presentation of the veteran of the month.
All right, again, we are always indebted to our veterans for all they have done to make this the greatest country in the world. So this month's veteran is Clarence Burno. He was a sergeant. It says S. Sergeant. What's the S. for? Staff Sergeant. It wasn't spelled out, I wasn't sure. All right, Staff Sergeant, United States Marine Corps. Served in Vietnam starting July 67, 1967 until January 1970. Clarence graduated from high school June of 1967 and enlisted in the US Marine Corps seeking to serve his country. His grandfather had taught him that service to your country was a matter of honor, responsibility, and to unquestionably heed the call to arms. After completing 16 weeks of boot camp, and he completed jump school at, he also completed jump school at Fort Benning, Clarence was assigned to the 3rd Marine Division Battalion, 9th Marine Infantry. And in March of 1969, he was shot nine times. They continued to fight until the medic, to the medic came to render aid. After 23 operations and a long day in the hospital, his Colonel presented him with the Purple Heart and Bronze Star in his hospital room. He was retired from the United States Marine Corps. When he, when he came home, he graduated from Drake University in Desmondes, Iowa, and started his career in education. Clarence worked in the field of education for 33 years. His last 16 years were spent in Clayton County Public Schools as an assistant principal, principal and coordinator of transportation. Clarence currently serves as the Clayton County Veterans Treatment Court as coordinator of mentors. He also serves as the chairman of Clayton County Veterans Advisory Board and a member of Armed Forces Senior Veterans. Clarence is a lifetime member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, American Legion, and Purple Heart Association. He has lived in Clayton County for 24 years and is married to the beautiful Ms. Rhonda Burno. Representative Rhonda Burno. Please help me welcome Clarence Burno, Staff Sergeant.
(laughter)
The next three items are proclamations. The first one is September is National Kinship Care Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes Kinship Care Month. Whereas Clayton County is steadfast in its commitment to promoting the safety and well-being of our children, and this includes providing a stable household for all youth in which they can be nurtured and succeed. And whereas more than 195,000 children throughout the state of Georgia are raised in kinship families with grandparent or relative caregivers who have stepped forward out of love and loyalty to care for their young relatives, providing them with a sense of connection, security, and ties to their cultural heritage, their family, and their community. And whereas kinship families in Clayton County have a valuable resource in the Kinship Care Resource Center which provides information, referrals, after-school, summer camp, tutoring, support groups, and a wide array of services, programs, and activities for grandparents and relative caregivers. And whereas Kinship Care Month provides an opportunity to showcase the accomplishments of countless youth throughout Clayton County who with the unconditional support of grandparents and other relatives have successfully navigated the emotional difficulties of separation for their parents. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2019 to be Kinship Care Month in Clayton County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge the importance and special contributions of the grandparents and relative caregivers. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2019.
The second proclamation is National Senior Center Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes National Senior Center Month. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas the Frank Bailey Senior Center and J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center have acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Clayton County. And whereas through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Clayton County to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas the Frank Bailey Senior Center and J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center in our county affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experience, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2019 to be National Senior Center Month, the key to aging well in Clayton County, Georgia. A call upon citizens to acknowledge the importance and special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older adults of our community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2019.
Now listen, I'm always granted by our senior centers and kinship care. And you will be happy to know, and it's not the first time I've said this, but Clayton County has the only accredited senior center in the state of Georgia. Of course, we've got to celebrate, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to have a accreditation celebration concert Fridays, September 20th, from 5 to 9. It's going to be at East Street Park. Free concert. Come out and help all of Clayton County celebrate our great seniors and our senior departments. And let's give them another round of applause.
And our last proclamation is September National Preparedness Month.
Clayton County recognizes September 2019 as National Preparedness Month. Be disaster aware, take action to prepare. Whereas National Preparedness Month created an opportunity for every Clayton County citizen to learn more about ways to prepare for all the types of emergencies from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every Clayton County citizen, all individuals, families, houses of worship, and businesses should focus on important steps to prepare for an emergency, including getting a kit, making a plan, being informed, and getting involved to help make preparedness a priority throughout the county. And whereas Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Office of Emergency Management has established a severe weather task force made up of our senior officials from public safety, transportation and development, information technology, Clayton County Schools, and Clayton County Board of Health to collaborate on response actions prior to, during, and after severe weather events. And whereas Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, officials of departments and agencies of the local, state, and federal governments, volunteer and professional associations, and private businesses are working to prevent and respond to all types of emergencies. These activities along with vigilant public contribution to a level of local, state, and national preparedness that is critical to securing our county, state, and our homeland. And whereas Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services developed the Ready Clayton app for smartphones which allows the user to locate shelters and road closures and receive other important information during major emergencies or disasters. Code Red is another free phone application that allows users to have instant severe weather notifications at the palm of their hand. And whereas we observe National Preparedness Month, we urge adults and children to participate in citizen preparedness activities and to look for additional preparedness information at our preparedness website, readyclayton.com, and Georgia Emergency Management Agency Ready website at ready.ga.gov. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Preparedness Month in Clayton County and recognize the importance of preparing for all potential emergencies and encourage citizens to participate in the weekly activities. Week 1, September 1st through 7th, save early for disaster costs. Week 2, September 8th through 14th, make a plan to prepare for disasters. Week 3, September 15th through 21st, teach youth to prepare for disasters. Week 4, September 22nd through 30th, get involved in your community's preparedness. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2019.
Next, we will have a formal briefing of the comprehensive plan, five-year update.
While they're coming, I always like to recognize our friends from City of Marl, Mayor DeTarr, Councilwoman Bridges, and Sylvia Riddick, City Manager. Also Judge Ferguson, she's always with us and just stepped out with State Representative Rhonda Burno. So we appreciate them as always. Mr. Ajiki.
I thank you, Commissioner. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. Today we have Andrew Smith from ARC, the Atlanta Regional Commission, to give you an update on the comprehensive plan, where we are and where we're headed. Andrew Smith.
Well, thank you, Patrick, and thank you Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, and members of the public for having me here. Again, my name is Andrew Smith. I work in the Community Development Group at the Atlanta Regional Commission. We are the intergovernmental planning organization for the 10-county Atlanta region, and that includes Clayton County. One of the services that we provide, and we provide it for several local governments in this part of metro Atlanta, is the ability to assist their staff with regular updates of their comprehensive plan when their due dates are coming due. And so this is something that we have been assisting Clayton County staff with in the Planning Community Development Department. And I just wanted to update everyone on kind of where we are, where we are going, and give you all a little more information to help everyone's understanding. So thank you again for having me. Well, again, one of our services that we provide at ARC is assisting local governments with updating their comprehensive plans. These are plans that are required by every local government in Georgia. They're required to be updated on a five-year cycle. Your county's most recent comprehensive plan was done in 2014, and so it's coming due now in 2019 to be updated. These are documents that I like to call sort of a management document. It's providing strategic direction on things like land use, transportation, economic development, kind of one place, unifying place to house all of these different goals, policies, and programs, and projects that you want to achieve in the next five, 10, 20 years. Again, the purpose here is really in terms of the comp plan update is to get citizen input, to try to put that together with staff and other departments to produce a plan that has prioritized goals and actions that hopefully will flesh out that vision that you've determined for, for the county's direction. These are the elements that the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, DCA, they require these elements to be included within all comprehensive plans for communities throughout the state. The three at the top are really the needs and opportunities. Those are the things that, you know, the county wants to work on going forward. Opportunities are things that may be more assets, you know, to build upon or maximize. Community goals, that's sort of a little bit more granular. And then community work program, that is even more granular in terms of those are programs, actions that you want to take in the next five years that'll help you achieve those goals and help you hopefully address those needs and opportunities. All these other elements that DCA requires for some communities, for example, if you have zoning, you have to do a land use element. Most communities in metro Atlanta have zoning, so that's just one example. This is kind of the schedule, sort of where we are. Got started really in earnest in about June, and we've been working with Patrick Ajiki and Brecka Johnson and Madeline Spann and several other key staff, many of whom are in this room today, to try to go through existing conditions, plans, small area plans that have been done since the last comprehensive plan, looking at the last comprehensive plan itself to try to assess, you know, how it might line up with new dynamics that are occurring in the region. And then a key part of this is a meeting with a steering committee that was put together by, by our friends here at the county and as well as hosting some public engagement opportunities, the second of which we're about to have on September 9th. And so everything sort of flows down to hopefully transmitting a draft plan later this month and then adopting locally at the end of October. These are just, this is a sampling of some of the smaller area plans, including plans related to specifically transit, or for example, your comprehensive transportation plan. These are things that have been updated or produced since the last plan that we can incorporate highlights of those into this larger framework within the comp plan. Some of the outreach activities that we've done in terms of the steering committee meetings and public meetings so far have revolved around certain areas, including data and demographics, kind of updating a snapshot of where the county is in terms of a lot of those different factors that may play into its future. We got a lot of input on needs and opportunities to try to check back in on the 2014 needs and opportunities and understand, are these things still a priority? Is this not a priority? Is it something that needs to be continued in your, in your opinion? We've done that both with the public and the steering committee. We did a lot, land use is a big element. Did a lot of taking a deeper dive at all of the existing land use classifications and the land use, how it's sort of geographically distributed around the county. And also took a look at the development nodes that were called out in the 2014 plan to kind of try to get a read from the public and the steering committee in terms of whether these were still a priority, how people thought about these, whether people think that there should be tweaks or modifications made to the language or the intent or, you know, what have you. So that was some of the other activities that we've been undertaking. Next slide. Some of the highlights of the feedback thus far, you can actually click it one more. I don't know why this is animated, but we sort of went through highlighted input that we've got, and I'm not going to read through all of these, of course, but, you know, a lot of these are called out in the 2014 plan, and they are still a priority today in a lot of people's minds, both in the public and on the steering committee in terms of focusing on development in the airport area, promoting conservation in the southern part of Clayton County, the Panhandle. We've heard a lot about warehouse and industrial development and trying to channel that to more appropriate areas in the future in terms of economic development, diversifying job sectors, maximizing the proximity that the county has to major transportation corridors, and maximizing a lot of institutional partnerships with, for example, Clayton State, the airport, and so on. Next slide. And this is just a little bit more in the areas of housing, public safety, and transportation. But in terms of housing, really encourage more mixed-use development, kind of focus more on quality and housing location, not necessarily on lot size or home size. Focus more efforts on code enforcement. Strengthen, continue strengthening public safety and the perception of same. Transportation facilities really encourage more, and I know there's a lot already in Clayton County, but more recreation, walking trails, biking, a lot of other modes besides just the car. And diversify uses and activities that you could pursue in a lot of the existing park space that you already have. Continue the incredibly strong nationally recognized stewardship of water, which the county has, and then improve coordination with your cities as well as the airport. And a lot of things, again, these are things that want to, folks want to continue strengthening that in many of these were already called out in the 2014 plan, and this is based on check-ins. This is sort of a continued direction for the county. The very last slide that I have here is kind of the next steps. We are going to do our final steering committee meeting and another public engagement meeting on Monday, the 9th here. We're going to just focus on kind of synthesized or distilled input from everything that we've done so far and look more at goals, policies, and then that, those work program items. Kind of check in on the last 2014 work program and understand which of those should be carried forward in a very high-level sense, try to get some input on that. Broadband is a kind of a new addition to the DCA rules in terms of one of the elements that they need addressed, and that's broadband access. And so we take a look at that. It's not supposed to be super technical, but we take a look at that and get some feedback on that as well, since that's a new addition to the DCA rules. And so that's kind of, again, where we, where we have been, where we are, where we're going, and hope to continue down the path here to get a plan wrapped up and adopted the tail end of October. And be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions? My talking board member.
Well, this is not a question, but more of a comment, because I'm not sure. I have three other things, and I believe that count, the census count, is the same time as the steering committee meeting on Monday, I think?
Yes, ma'am, I believe you're correct, Commissioner. It's not?
8:00 a.m., okay. Well, and I'm not sure which slide it was, but the one with the coordinating with the Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, right. I really want us to focus a lot more on that, so I'm not sure who will be heading up that steering committee and all, but I definitely want to focus on that for the county.
Absolutely. And that's something that we have, that we have heard, that we already know about just from our role at ARC, that we have heard from a lot of local governments around the airport. We've done a lot of work with airport area coordination between local governments and the airport. And so we've, that resonates with information that we kind of already had and, and information that we have heard throughout this process so far. I, I will take that, and I would encourage, you know, however the staff connection needs to take place in terms of the steering committee, talking to those folks and connecting with them. I would absolutely encourage that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. Have you taken into consideration any opportunity zone funding in the development of these areas?
Opportunity zones are a, and I'm not, I have joined this process kind of midstream in terms of our staffing. Those are a hot topic right now. I don't know how many there are in this part of the region exactly and exactly where they fall. You know, that kind of thing is a kind of thing that we have heard a little bit about so far, and that's the kind of thing where you would house that in, you know, your work program for the future in terms of pursuing that type of funding, you know, and, and working on that kind of thing. So it's, that's, that's, we have, we have heard that, and that definitely, that definitely resonates.
I just want to piggyback on that comment by Commissioner Davis. I think one of the things we just need to make note of is a little bit more than just pursuing the funding. One of the things we do need to do as a county is put together a, I guess, a study group, a study committee to make sure that we are not just pursuing funding, but looking at the effects of bringing in funding in the direction that will line up with this comprehensive plan. One of the things that I noticed right off the bat that I spoke to Chairman about that I think you all need to be aware of, we got a lot of people that are hedge fund groups coming in and buying up our properties and our residential properties, which could be problematic because then that can brings in more people renting those properties. So as we move forward, I want us to look at best practices for the area, in that area, to see what ordinances we can put in place to allow for quality growth when it comes to the opportunity zones. And we need to identify them and put them in this, somewhere noted in here. And then the second comment is it's important that as we move forward that what we get back from the community is not able, not just put into a comprehensive plan, but also aligned with the direction of those that are actually charged with economic development in our county.
Any other questions?
It was more a statement than a question.
All right, well, thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next, the board will hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the mic, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Mr. Alvin Farmer.
Mr. Alvin Farmer, Unincorporated Clayton County. When you addressed the Reverend of the Month, you said S. Sergeant, you did not know what that S. meant, and they informed your staff because you said it was not spelled out. These red letters that I have on this paper are not spelled out. Will you take the paper this time, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Chairman Warner, will you take the paper?
I will take the paper since I don't have a copy, sir, but you will have to give it to the officer, only because I don't have a copy. Thank you.
So when things are not spelled out, I am talking to people to bring them to this commission, and some of them are from foreign countries, and they need to be spelled out. Or some of the grammar is wrong in there also. The second thing is, you just awarded the senior citizens people, which I believe they deserve that, but at the Griswells Center, in the place that they go inside to the dining facility, you need to lower that concrete to make it more handicap accessible. I was there this afternoon during lunchtime, and a lot of people got to take that step up, and they're old, and then they're having issues. Plus, someone says if someone is going into that door with a scrolling, stuff like that, they got to go up on there. So that thing need to be, the sidewalk need to be lowered to make it more handicap accessible, and I would say even add some handrails, because you got a lot of older people that are coming to that area right now. I've been gone for quite a while. I went by the Aquatic Center, and that sign and martyr is still there, the bus sign, and I called two of their people, and then left messages today, and I'm going to stay on this. Also, coming here today, that right turn signal, turn lane that I asked you for at North Ark has still not happened. We have emission testing, and one of the reasons we is, we're sending out a lot of stoplights doing emissions and things like that. That will help at that North Ark turn. The clock at Griswell, those two that I spoke to you about, they still not be fixed. Now, one of them, I looked in the back, all it requires is a double-A battery. If that dead battery that's still in there hasn't corroded the clock as well. This is termite area right there. Outside in front of this building, you have brown mulch and everything, and I don't know if y'all getting it treated, or whatever the case may be, but my recommendation is to use rubber, they cut up tires, and then turn mulching it, or to use stone. Stone will cost more money. Still at this area, at least the front that I came in, no recycling bins. And y'all are, what is that, praising our senior citizen people, but what are you doing about all the people getting holiday pay, because I'm sure you're getting it also?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hopkins, can you check on that senior Charlie Griswell? Yeah, take a look at that. Thank you. Mickey Garber.
Commissioners, let me open with a cliche. Timing is everything.
That's true.
Let me elaborate on the framing of this cliche. It's time to remind all our students in elementary school, middle school, and high school, the proper elimination of their candy wrappers from Halloween in the proper receptacle. It's time to remind everyone to put all their wrappings from our great American holiday, Thanksgiving, in the proper receptacle. It's time to remind everyone that our great county's birthday is November 30th, and she should be extra clean on that day and every day. It's time to remind everyone that Christmas is coming, and you need to start saving your money for that great day, and to remind everyone to put their pretty wrappings of red, green, and gold in the proper receptacle, and to dispose of the beautiful Christmas tree in the proper place. In closing, I started with a cliche. Timing is everything. Let me end with a cliche. Cleanliness is next to godliness. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. And also, I just want to, we've got some special guests here. Ms. Kira Rogers, her mother, who is our direct, one of our directors, mother and sisters visiting from us, let's welcome them. Welcome.
Next, the board will consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Well, it's not a question, but under, I think it's 32, the request for the Virginia Gray Rick Center from Representative Stovall, I believe those times are incorrect. It has six, five o'clock, I think, to 9:30. Is that correct, Troy?
Okay, because normally, yeah, the center's closed at nine, so I don't know if we need to make that correction here.
Yeah, she's just making a correction on the time, I guess.
Yes, she had 9:30 on there. It should be nine o'clock.
Was that what the request stated? Was it nine or 9:30?
Nine.
Okay. All right.
The paper attached here is 9:30.
All right, here are no other questions. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that's the end of the consent agenda. The rest are board appointments?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, are we at board appointments? All right, first appointment is to the Board of Zoning Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Ray James. Term will commence immediately and expire on August 19th of 2021. Any recommendations?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a recommendation for Carlton Holloway to be appointed to that board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Yasmin Nija?
Yes.
Okay. Who resigned from the Library Board.
Mr. Chairman, his term ends on 10 to 2021.
All right, there any recommendations?
Yes, I would like to recommend Mr. Robert, let me get his last name correct here. McAllen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Robert McAllen?
McAllen, yes.
All right, probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next appointment is also to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Alma Brown, resigned from the board. Term will expire on June 30th, 2021. Any recommendations? Like to recommend Ola Kimble. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next appointment is also to the Library Board. This appointment will fill the unexpired term of Reverend Emmett McCord, who has resigned. Term will expire July 31st, 2021. Any recommendations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dr. Shantara Rump Carter to serve on the Library Board.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Board of Appeals, Ms. Frances Solomon. Term expires on September 3rd, 2019. New term will begin on September 3rd, 2019, expire September 3rd of 2022. Any recommendations?
I move to reappoint Ms. Frances Solomon.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Board of Behavior Health. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Jackie Edwards, who resigned. The term will commence immediately and expire on May 15th, 2021. Any recommendations?
Yes, I'd like to recommend Ms. Shirley Davis for that board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Last appointment is to the DFAX, Department of Family and Children's Services. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Shantara Rump Carter. She was not able to serve. Term will commence immediately and will expire on June 30th, 2022. Any recommendations?
Move that we appoint Sidney Richardson?
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. That concludes appointments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's just on litigation.
All right, there's a motion going.
Chair, I've got a quick question. If you allow me, this from Mr. E. G. K. One of the things, you don't, I don't need an answer tonight, so you don't need to come up and our COO. We see a lot of people barbecuing in store yards and so forth. Two questions I have, you know how our churches have to go through the health department to get licenses, and are we, do we have anything, you know, that we have to have these people to have any kind of license or go through their health departments, training? And secondly, if the store owners are allowing this, I mean, I think the county need to get a little cut off that or something, because, I mean, it's very obvious that a lot of these store owners are allowing people to do this. I mean, it's really just a lot of barbecuing on every corner on the weekends, and that's just something I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. Thank you.
And let me also say, the Health, the Board of Health has been looking at that as well. All right, so we have a request going to executive session for litigation. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. From three deaths here. Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chair, I have one settlement involving Sabrina Jackson, involves an accident that occurred on or about May 3rd, 2019, at Mount Zion Road, at the intersection of Mount Zion Boulevard. The bodily injury amount is $7,500, and requesting that the county settle this amount and also authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then you just make the motion. Is there a second? Got somewhere to go. Commissioner Gregory seconded the motion. Are there any questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
Some.
I was going to let him make both of them.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good night.